This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the Eau Claire Area School Board. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM.
All right, it is 7:04 PM. I will call this meeting of the Eau Claire School Board to order. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. May I ask, are we in compliance with open meetings laws?
Yes.
Thank you. Let's do a roll call.
Commissioner Zur.
Here.
Commissioner Becca.
Here.
Commissioner Clemens.
Here.
Commissioner Harder.
Here.
Commissioner Lyons.
Here.
Commissioner Nordean.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yeah.
Is everybody speakers all made up? Like not just the muted mic, but speakers on? Well, then maybe we've got it done. Oh, there we go. Okay. Thank you. At this time, those who are able and willing, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As we always do, we start our meetings with our public forum. The public forum allows citizens up to four minutes to address the board, providing that she or he has additional or new information that has not been previously shared with the board. The school board will not hear personal complaints of school personnel, nor any person connected with the school system in a public forum. We have two speakers for our public forum tonight. The first is Lucinda Kemet.
Thank you. My name is Lucinda Kemet. I have four kids, two graduated from ECASD, one is a freshman at Memorial. Previously, I've been involved with the board as the president of the Support Eau Claire Public Schools Pro-Referendum Group in 2016. I wanted to come on tonight and give you a real-time update and some requests. Things are not good out here. My emails, my texts, my Facebook feed, my Messenger is filled with stories of parents trying to balance their kid's education and their work and feeling like they're failing miserably. I know many high school students are disappointed and worried about the lack of learning that they are experiencing. Any non-ECASD extracurricular program that have had to cancel because the school will not allow them access to buildings. I know local families driving long distances to other towns so their kids can play sports. I know teachers who are in tears daily because they can't possibly meet the demands of what they're asked to do. Personally, my son has seven classes and in those seven classes, about 22 hours total of instruction and homework, only about 14 hours of instruction. He has way too much free time. I do my best to find constructive things for him to do, but I also have other responsibilities, kids and a job, and I am not the only parent with these challenges. I hope you will listen to what I have to say with an open heart and know that my words share the best intention for everyone involved. But here are my two overarching concerns. All of these decisions that we've made this year are based on risk for a disease that poses incredibly low risk to most of us and to all of our kids. Since onset, the case fatality for Wisconsin for people under age 60 is 0.2%, less than 0.2%. Since July, that number has dropped to less than 0.1%. For those of you who are less than 40 since July, only two out of 10,000 people who get the disease have died. Our hospitals locally have been very underwhelmed. And for people under age 20, only 0.0% is the case fatality rate in Wisconsin. No one has died. We know that 90% of the cases have underlying conditions and our response is certainly harming many of those underlying conditions. In fact, we could talk a great length citing numerous scientific studies about the damage our response to COVID is having to our mental and physical. We are punishing the kids to protect the vulnerable. I love many people who are part of that vulnerable group and they would agree with everything I have said here. There are other ways to protect vulnerable people. The Health Department and the school district have been playing a game of the Health Department says, "We didn't specifically tell them they had to do that." And ECASD says, "We are just doing what the Health Department says." I have deeply studied all of this and when looking at close range, I get it. I see that what you are all saying is true. But take a step up and at 10,000 feet or 20,000 feet, you are both pointing fingers and blaming the other while real harm is being done to our kids. Here are my requests, or here's my request. Start making your default position yes. Make your starting position the default, what is best for the mental, academic, physical, social, emotional development, the whole child. Then make someone prove to you that the risks outweigh the benefits if you have to do less than what is best for the whole child. You are elected to provide an education to our children, which is so vastly important and encompasses so much more than just the ABCs. Start by saying yes to normalcy. Say yes to going outside during study hall or lunch. Yes to non-contact sports. Yes to clubs and extracurriculars. Yes to letting the kids learn and grow together. Yes to allowing teams and groups to use the facilities in the evening. Make the starting position, yes, we can do the normal things and then make some.
Miss Kemet, I'm sorry, that's your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our second speaker tonight is John Gustafson.
Hello. Thank you all for your time today. I just wanted to quickly present a few metrics to the board. We all have things that have made us feel better during the pandemic and data has often made me feel better. It's made me know that as a community here in Eau Claire, we've been exceptionally lucky in a lot of cases. Right now, you're looking at a graph of new cases in Eau Claire County. There are two peaks that are either missing or lagging that you would see on the statewide chart. For example, you see a peak around the Fourth of July and then declining numbers after that. That's when the state was seeing many increased cases. I don't know what to attribute that to, but it can't have hurt that we kept a we kept a safer-at-home order locally. And the problem is, is the data has not made me feel quite so good lately. As you can see, the numbers are increasing and it's starting to look much more like the state shape. Can we see the next graphic, please? Besides new cases, I've also been looking at a two-week rolling average of positivity rates. Positivity rates is a more volatile. You see more jagged lines here. It's a more volatile metric, but it is a key one that I don't think gets enough local attention. Generally, if you have a high positivity rate, it either means that you are not testing enough or that you are detecting an actually high positive rate in the community. Neither of those is good. Both can be concealing asymptomatic cases, which is one of the biggest threats to our school being open. As far as what a good positivity rate is, opinions vary a lot. World Health Organization says no less than 5% in order to start going back to normal. Harvard Global Health Institute puts it at 3%. But even at the White House's own much more generous rate of 10%, we are, we have been above that for the last week. And again, these are not just this week's numbers. This is an average of all the numbers for the preceding two weeks for every day on the chart here. These are also lagging indicators, which means that we don't see what the real picture is right here. Those numbers could go down, but it could be, it could be that virulency is about to go up. And if it does, it may be too late to stop it. I have a daughter in the school system. I am grateful to the district to be able to supply some in-person time to her. It's very valuable and as long as it can be healthy for both students and staff, I am in favor of saying yes, just like the last speaker said, but only if everybody is healthy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes our public forum. We'll now move on to our superintendent's report. Mr. Johnson.
Good evening, Chair Nordean, board members, student representatives, and executive team members. Before we get into the beginning of school report and presentations, we have some excellent news to report from last year. We're excited to announce that six Eau Claire Area School District seniors were notified recently that they have qualified as semifinalists for National Merit Scholarships. These students took the preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship qualifying test last fall and represent the highest scoring entrance in Wisconsin out of 16,000 total semifinalists in the country. Students will learn in February of 2021 if they have advanced to finalist standing and will be notified beginning of March of 2021 if they have won select scholarships. I'd like to share congratulations to the following seniors. Morgan Jenke of North High School. Rachel Lester of Memorial. Joshua Mathune from Memorial. Our own student board representative, Emery Tool from Memorial. Benjamin Young and Delina Young from Memorial High School. Once again, congrats to all. We're very proud of your accomplishments and good luck in the next stages. The first days of school are now upon us and we're anxious to present to the board and public later tonight in the agenda. But we were able to witness firsthand at the elementary and secondary levels in this executive team just how things started on September 1st and beyond with our blended model. While we still have much to accomplish with our virtual model, and we will illustrate that later, there was so much to celebrate and observe due to the efforts of our staff, families, and our students. It was a different feel when we stepped into our secondary schools on September 1st. When students walked in for the first time in over five months, there was a subdued and curious feel to the first couple of class periods. We were amazed at the scheduling work accomplished by our counselors, registrars, and administrators before that day and in the days afterward. Staff greeted students in the hallways, got them acclimated with a variety of activities, and modeled safety expectations and fielded questions. As executive team members, we rotated amongst the secondary schools and last week did the same for the elementary schools. We're so very proud of what our staff accomplished with their students in these areas from a health and safety standpoint and from a relationship standpoint, too. We've definitely had our share of challenges in our instructional model, particularly with our virtual program and particularly at the secondary level. It's very dynamic. We're in such a different place than we were since August 17th, even last week. There is a sense of expected ambiguity with such a large change. We've also learned that scheduling is a challenge, as is staffing. Schedules changed and were completed in three to four weeks as opposed to three to four months. Kim Kohler will illustrate that in our presentation later this evening. Teacher and student ratios are now very much in alignment across schools at the secondary level after staffing, scheduling, and collapsing of small sections were accomplished over the past week. Jim will be describing and explaining this 40-to-1 ratio for virtual schooling as well. Also, a few districts our size do this. Kenosha, Waukesha, and Stevens Point, for example. Yet we have connected with them, as we have with other larger districts, to share ideas. This is very difficult work in such a large system. There are four tangible solutions that we've now utilized that have helped and will help us in the future. First off, providing the virtual PD on the front end and based on what staff professional development surveys reflect. Jim will speak more to this later in the agenda. Informing families of the possibility of change and how that change will be communicated and when. When situations arise, I believe the majority of our families do understand, respect, and appreciate this information, even if it does change or they disagree with us, as long it is timely and provides that rationale as to why we change. Next, staffing the model as we had recently done. This is probably most critical. It caused the most difficulty and stress. And finally, future requests of virtual cohort C must and will be handled differently than we did from the August 5th to 28th time period to allow staffing need to be recognized, candidates interviewed, hired, and then placed into a schedule before hiring. This places too much stress on administrators, registrars, Skyward experts, students, and far too much on our teachers. Our teachers are not to blame for our virtual struggles as I must improve our system and commitment to good faith communication with all parties, staff, families, and most importantly, students. Timely information and transparency from my level that fosters trust rather than erodes it. From a district level, we have provided communication Sunday evening to those families who have requested an instructional model change. We can only honor those when we are first able to ensure the supports are in place for students as well as staff, the ones I mentioned earlier. The ownership concept of our virtual model was a critical reflection for us and we have now committed to a shift to an administrator at each virtual level, elementary and secondary, and I will illustrate after the consent agenda. While we all have good intentions and a hands-on deck mentality with the virtual model, we will not experience any success until we have owners of this new model and I'm confident we will improve week to week with the changes we made to place personnel and leadership in those positions. We must not fail our students. And finally, and most critically, the safe learning environment. In our strategic plan, under the student, social, and emotional growth objective, the first action step is to maintain a safe and supportive learning environment. Further bullet points in this objective are known as follows. The first is healthy and the second is safe. For example, each student learns in an environment that is physically safe for students and adults. Well, the third, fourth, and fifth are engaged, supported, and challenged. We will make progress on those three in our blended and virtual models, but we can't get to them without healthy and safe first. I shared with our system leaders this Thursday that out of the 22 Wisconsin education news stories shared with me as part of my superintendent's organization, 12 highlighted classrooms, grade levels, or entire schools that had been shut down due to the viral infection or quarantine. This has not yet happened to us, yet we are far larger than many of those districts highlighted. I am so appreciative of our task force members and especially our phenomenal staff in getting us started with the beginning of school. I know it's been difficult and not been easy, but I truly appreciate all of your efforts. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, moving on to the board president's report. Over the past few weeks, school board members have been fielding emails and calls regarding the start of schools. We know that there have been many difficult obstacles, as Superintendent Johnson just referenced, and that there are still questions to be answered and work that continues to be done. We, as the school board, are committed to doing our part to help with these issues. The lion's share of the work, though, putting this extraordinary school year together, falls to our staff. I'd like to thank Mr. Johnson and his team for working to help address the difficulties that have arisen thus far as well as for planning to support teachers and staff going forward. Most importantly, however, I'd like to thank our teachers, building principals, and school staff. You have been asked to do the biggest part of lifting our school year off the ground. You've been putting in work that is different than any you have ever been asked to do before, some of you in new subjects and all of you in new modes of delivery. And we know that this has not been easy. We know that there have been unexpected challenges, many, many questions, and that you have worked countless hours for our students. Thank you. What has impressed me most in this process is that our teachers and principals came with these problems not only wanting to be heard, but then to step up and be part of the solution. You have lent your expertise and talent to forging better processes, to supporting one another, and to the difficult teamwork across levels in the district needed to keep our school year improving. It would be naive to think that all of the issues have been fully solved. We know that they have not. And that there will not be more challenges in this year. But it is your commitment to the work needed to stand together to face these challenges that has inspired me and I think many around the district. You have my heartfelt and personal thanks, as well as the gratitude of the entire school board. Finally, tonight I have the pleasure of being able to introduce our two new student representatives to the school board. We are excited to have the voices of our students once again with us in our meetings to add additional perspectives to our discussions. Student representatives will be working with Superintendent Johnson on their developments as well as participating in our board meetings. Representing North High School is Zoe Wolf. Zoe is a junior at North and has lived in Eau Claire her entire life. She's a part of the Student Council where she serves as chairperson for the Social and Charity Committee. Zoe is excited to be a part of the school board and ensure the student body feels as though they have a voice. And representing Memorial is Emery Tool, a senior. He's the captain of Mock Trial and plays viola in the orchestra at Memorial, as well as a self-directed quartet. Outside of school, he is the regional director for Eau Claire and Jackson Counties of the High School Democrats of America, and he interns at Weld Riley SC. He helps to study neuroscience and music after high school and before pursuing an education and career in law. We are proud to welcome you to the board and look forward to your tenure with us. Thank you. At this time, we will turn it over to our student representatives for their first student report. This week, we will start with Zoe Wolf from North.
Can everyone hear me?
You can.
All right. Hello, I am Zoe Wolf, the representative for North. I am honored to be here tonight to ensure that the student body has a voice. I would like to begin my report by discussing how the blended learning model has been going at North. Overall, it has been a success. I can confidently say that the students are eager to get back on campus to see everyone. I'll admit, I had my concerns going into the school year, but it has been successful so far for on-campus learning. The online portion of the blended model is not going as well. It seems as though the teachers have not been directly instructed on what the online courses should look like. Under the circumstances, most teachers have been handling it well and appear happy to see us all. I also reached out to a senior student doing full virtual learning and I got some feedback from them. The student said, quote, "Online school at North has been okay. The teachers that I know are great and well-loved by students are clearly struggling to do substantial learning. Teaching. I was given almost no information regarding what my senior year would look like and it's frustrating because I know most teachers are doing their best," end quote. It seems as though the online portion of learning is where the struggle is. In conclusion, on-campus learning has been far more successful and virtual learning needs some work. I understand this is a learning curve for a song and you guys have been trying your best to make this work, but there are still issues that need to be fixed. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now turn it over to Emery Tool.
All right, can everybody hear me all right?
You can. Thank you.
Good evening. I hope you're all doing well. Quite honestly, I don't have an overwhelmingly positive report for you tonight. I've spoken now to a few dozen students at this point and their thoughts, feelings, and words have informed this statement. I'll start with the good. I concur with Zoe in that hybrid learning is honestly going better than I think most students expected it to be. A few students raised concerns about technology and equity and I will be sending a more detailed email about it to James Martin this evening so that hopefully those concerns can get addressed. Now, to the worst news. Online learning is not going particularly well. Every 100% virtual student I spoke to was disappointed in the district and how online learning is going. The most positive words I got were, "Hopefully, once we actually have schedules, it will go better." Honestly, after speaking with students and being a virtual student myself, I can say that we are failing the online constituency at Memorial. The first step in writing this is to increase communication and I'm glad that Mr. Johnson brought that up in his report tonight. I'm lucky enough to have Mr. Johnson available to directly address my concerns and the concerns that my peers are bringing to me, but I hope that we can expand this communication to the entire constituency of online students at Memorial. And I hope we can do better as a district in truly striving to deliver quality education to everyone and not just our hybrid learners.
Thank you. We will now move on to school board committee reports. We'll start with budget development. Mr. Harder.
Thank you. Good evening. We did meet. The Budget Development Committee has met twice, actually, since our last board meeting. We talked about a number of issues, including the Solar in Schools project, which has identified some additional funds that were needed to cover electrical engineering costs that had not previously anticipated. In budget development, we discussed some different ways of meeting those needs. And at this time, the BDC is not recommending the use of district funds to cover these costs. We'll hear more about that in tonight's referendum update. We also discussed the referendum timeline and we learned that the timeline is already behind schedule due to the COVID situation. After some discussion, the committee has recommended that the established referendum timeline dates should be moved forward by exactly one year. This will give time to better assess a number of post-COVID variables, including state funding, district facility and operational needs, and also to gauge local support for the tax increases that would be needed. So the committee has recommended two upcoming board check-ins on this question of referendum timing and progress, one update in November and one in February. And we also discussed the possibility of restarting or working with past members to rekindle the Support Eau Claire Public Schools Initiative, which we heard about from Lucinda in the public comment earlier. There was a local citizen organization which was extremely helpful with spreading positive information during the last referendum. And although the referendum has now been moved out, we'd like to try and reengage with that group. And so we'll, and we'll hear more about budget with tonight's budget update, which is also on the agenda, a general budget update. So that's what I have for now. Thank you.
Commissioner Harder, we'll move on to demographic trends and facilities planning. Ms. Kohler.
Good evening. The Demographic Trends and Facilities Planning Committee will meet on Thursday of this week. Our goal is to examine some data and then summarize the trends that we see and be able to present to the board, looking for some sort of direction or feedback regarding next steps for the committee.
Thank you. LEAP, Mr. Schmidt.
LEAP met last Tuesday and has commissioned our consultant to work to develop a video for our staff and community to understand how innovation can take place, teacher innovation can take place in the school district. So we should have a first version of that video hopefully by the next meeting in October.
Thank you. Policy and Governance will meet on Thursday at 1:00 PM. We will be continuing the work that we have been doing all summer, I guess, dealing with student curriculum and learning groups. We're going to start examining our hiring policy and we'll be talking about coherent governance. Next on the agenda is our legislative update. Dr. Johnson.
Just trying to find my place here. All right, so on September 4th, a federal judge in Washington DC has struck down the controversial rule that required public schools to direct more of their coronavirus relief funds to private school students. It was a relief for a lot of public schools across the United States. The Governor's Emergency Order Number One, which establishes statewide rules and various exceptions regarding the wearing of face coverings in indoor locations and in certain other enclosed spaces is due to expire on September 28th if it's not extended. However, school districts have the ability and authority, which we have in Eau Claire School, to have already taken the proactive steps in regards with our current policy to stay in effect. On September 2nd, the Wisconsin Community Resilience and Response Task Force released its embedding equity in Wisconsin school reopening and planning during COVID-19 toolbox. That is available in PDF form on their site. Also, on September 2nd, the Nonpartisan Wisconsin Policy Forum released a new report titled "K-12 Trends Offer Caution as Tough Budget Choices Loom." Among the key findings is that while spending on public education nationwide from 2008 to 2018 increased by 23%, it grew only 15% in Wisconsin, placing us 38th in the country as it relates to public education spending. The USDA extended its Certain Federal School Meals Plan waiver through December 31st. This will permit schools to offer food to all kids regardless of income or enrollment through the end of 2020 or until funding runs out. The Legislative Fiscal Bureau on Monday reported state tax collections a 1% increase from the previous year and only 0.6% less than the projected in January, according to the State Department of Revenue, which potentially will have a reduced impact on funding for public schools in that regard. On August 24th, DPI updated its regulatory flexibility framework. The initial set of policies provisions addressed the following issues: licensure, pupil count dates, transportation, school nutrition, and the school day milk program. The new additional topics include open enrollment, hours of instruction, various school safety drills, attendance, transparency, and educator effectiveness in the time of COVID-19. And then on August 21st, the Department of Health and Human Services released a new detailed guidance for schools on how to prevent and handle COVID-19. released a new detailed guidance for schools on how to prevent and handle COVID-19 outbreaks. The intent of this release was to provide school district and administrators best practices approaches. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. We now move on to our Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda items are voted on with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the Consent Agenda and voted on separately. Tonight's Consent Resolution Agenda includes minutes of August 17th, 2020, minutes of closed session, August 17th, 2020, human resources employment report, revisions to Policy 443.7 Code of Classroom Conduct, parking permits, and extension of authorization to executive directors for summer months. I would now hear a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Johnson, second by Commissioner Zer. I think we can just, well, just for clarity, let's go ahead and do a roll call.
Commissioner Zer?
Yes.
Commissioner Becca?
Yes.
Commissioner Clements?
Yes.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Nordine?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you. At this time, I'll turn the floor back to Mr. Johnson for an administrative update.
Thank you. Good evening. We have an announcement related to our virtual learning and an administrative shift to better serve our virtual learners and their families. Laura Slipting graduated from UW Milwaukee in 1988 with a bachelor's degree in elementary ed. She also earned a master of teaching degree from the University of Aurora, Illinois in 2001. Laura holds licenses through the DPI to work as an elementary, middle-level teacher, a pre-K-12 principal, and is director of instruction. Laura's career in education began in the Waterford Grade at School District in 1989. She taught elementary ed and GT for 21 years, as well as served as an elementary principal and director of instruction for Stanley Boyd Area Schools. In 2015, Laura moved to the Eau Claire Area School District to be a gifted and talented teacher. She has been principal at Locust Lane Elementary for five years. Starting Wednesday, Laura will now serve the Eau Claire Area School District as Virtual Elementary Programming Administrator. Dr. Jo Eisenhoof graduated from the University of Wisconsin Eau Claire in 1988 with a bachelor's degree in special ed and a minor in regular ed. He also received a master's degree from the University of Wisconsin Eau Claire and a doctorate from Edgewood College in 2012. Jo holds licenses through the DPI to work as an elementary, middle-level teacher, special ed teacher, pre-K-12 principal, director of SPED and Pupil Services, and superintendent. In 2012, Jo began his career with the Eau Claire Area School District. He worked as an assistant principal at North High until 2019. In 2019, he transferred into the principalship at Sam Davy Elementary, where he has been since. Starting Wednesday, Dr. Eisenhoof will transfer to a principal split between Locust Lane Elementary School and Sam Davy Elementary. Kula Vang graduated from UW Eau Claire with a bachelor's degree in elementary ed in 2007. Kula holds licenses from the Wisconsin DPI in regular ed, mathematics, director of instruction, and her principal licensure. In 2008, Kula began with the district as a substitute Title I teacher. She has served Lynn Elementary School as a second-grade teacher since 2010. Starting Wednesday, Kula will transfer to a teacher on special assignment roles split evenly between Locust Lane Elementary and Sam Davy Elementary. Travis Hetke graduated from the University of Wisconsin Eau Claire in 2002 with a bachelor's degree in sociology. He also earned a master's degree in guidance and counseling from the University of Wisconsin Stoughton in '04 and an educational administration degree from Viterbo in 2009. Travis holds licenses through the DPI to work as a school counselor and a pre-K-12 principal. His career in education began in 2004 in the Eau Claire Area School District. He was a school counselor for 13 years before becoming assistant principal at Memorial High. Travis will now serve the Eau Claire Area School District as the Virtual Secondary Programming Administrator. Thank you.
Thank you. We wish all of our new administrative positions the best of luck. We know that there's a lot of work to be done, and we're glad for your leadership on this. At this time, we're going to adjourn to committee. We have three committee reports tonight. We are running about eight minutes behind schedule, so I'm going to rob potentially five minutes from the referendum update and the budget update to make sure that we have the full 40 minutes allotted if needed for the opening of schools update. The opening of schools update is our first item, and at this time, I'll turn it over to Ms. Kohler and Superintendent Johnson and the rest of the team.
Thank you very much, Dr. Nordine. The title slide, Reopening of Schools' Progress Report. If you could advance the next slide, please. As you can tell, there are many departments and responsibilities at play in our Welcome Back to School in preparation for our first days. Quite frankly, in order to allow the Welcome Back to School oval to be shown in this slide, we separated the pairs of executive team members departments. However, in regard to our hiring of new staff lately, all four would align. This evening, you will hear from each executive team member about their responsibilities and departments in preparation for our first days of school. Next slide, please. Thank you. To begin, the most difficult and intricate components of the start of school has been the staffing and scheduling after cohorts were formed on August 17th. From August 5th until the 28th, 766 families submitted instructional model change for their students. A change of 766 students is larger than more than 42% of school districts in the state. This scheduling task is such a heavy lift, and I'm very proud of the work our administrators and staff had done in less than three weeks. From August 28th to the present, 198 students have since requested a change in their present instructional model. If we honor those next 198 requests, that would be 946 total students. This number of students is larger than the total enrollment of over half the districts in the state. Although Kim Kohler will go into more detail on the master scheduling components, and K. Marx will further illustrate quite a bit about our staffing, at this time, Jim Schmidt will now provide information on our cohort assignments, their instruction, and how they fit as part of our overall staffing and scheduling process. Thank you. Superintendent Johnson mentioned a key step in the staffing process was assigning students to cohorts. Students choosing the blended model were either assigned to Cohorts A or B, and those are based on two key factors. One was keeping families together, and the second was that assignment was based on house number. Even house numbers were primarily assigned to Cohort A and odd-numbered Cohort B. We modeled this before choosing it and learned it did the best job compared to the others, like using the alphabet to drive our cohort selection and having the cohorts look similar to one another. It also allowed for consistent bussing. And because we used one side of the street for one cohort and the other side of the street for the other cohort, both bussing and the diversity of our student body were relatively unaffected. So Kim is now going to discuss how the cohort development then allowed buildings to develop their master schedules.
There we go. Thank you. I was muted. I'm sorry. Master scheduling is a very complex process. You can see here just some of the major milestones in master scheduling. Typically, our registrars spend three to four months identifying instructional blocks, determining how many of each class we will need, assigning teachers to those classes, and setting up the maximum capacity of each class. They also spend during those three to four months time entering student data regarding course choices, assigning students to the courses, and then publishing the schedules for the student's first day of class. And some of our individualized programming takes even longer than that. Sometimes those individualized programs can take upwards of six months to really schedule. This year, we condensed the process that you see outlined here into three to four weeks. As you know and have heard from several teachers, families, and community members, this fall, there were bumps in the road related to scheduling. Those bumps happened between the steps of assigning students to courses and their first day of instruction. And I'd like to talk a little bit more about what happens typically in between those two phases. Maybe. I'm trying to page down. Sorry, guys. There we go. After plugging in all of the information from the previous slide, which courses will be offered, who will teach them, which students want those courses, et cetera, our student information system will run a schedule that plugs the students into as many courses that it can within the rules that our registrars set. And while the student information system is powerful, it does have limitations. And this is really where our registrars come in. They're the ones that do the heavy lifting and the critical thinking around that. And you can see here all of the tasks that our registrars must complete in a time that we call "after the run." The need for this type of problem solving that you see here happens every year. These are bugs that we usually work out over the summer, and they're rarely seen by families or staff. However, because of the compressed timeframe this year, students and staff schedules were visible prior to all of these pieces of the puzzle being put into place. And so, some students or families would report conflicts, saying their student perhaps only had three hours of the day scheduled when schedules were first published, or we've had recently changes as we tried to balance enrollment, so we might have one class with many more students than another. Our student information system isn't taught to think critically about that balancing. Those are things where we need the humans behind the scenes to get these sorts of things done. So, the master scheduling process is complex, and like I said, it usually takes about three or four months, and much of this is the behind-the-scenes work that nobody ever sees. This also is really one of the steps that is needed before much of staffing can take place. So, human resources played an important role in putting those final pieces of the puzzle together through staffing, and Kay would like to talk more about that at this time.
Thanks, Kim. So, when we looked at staffing, we looked at two critical pieces. The information from Eau Claire City County Health Department regarding the social distancing requirements, as well as the parents' survey regarding the instructional model in which of the cohorts, or to the instructional model, the families wanted for their students. Both of those were taken into consideration when we looked at re-staffing the district. At that point, we realized it was necessary to repurpose 44 certified staff positions to serve the district in a different manner this year. So, repurposing is different than what we would consider reassignment, which happens every year. For example, a reassignment would be when we have a staff member who's moving from one building to another, or perhaps they're teaching a different number of sections that they're certified for versus the previous year. Those sorts of things happen every year, and we would consider that just a reassignment of their position from one year to another. But this year, repurposing took on a different angle because we looked at taking positions that weren't typically classroom teacher positions and turning them into classroom teaching positions. When it was determined that we needed to do this, it was going to be, and that we knew it was going to be, a minimum of 44 positions that were going to have to be repurposed. We were able to calculate that those 44 positions at a minimum were going to cost the district just over $4 million. So, the 44 positions came from the following areas to be repurposed from, and we moved them into the blended and/or 100% virtual classroom teacher positions. So you can see from the slide that we're sharing here that those positions came from AGR and title positions, either coaches or interventionists, coordinator positions, or library of media specialist positions. And so, those 44 positions came from those four different areas and then were moved into the blended model or the 100% virtual classroom teacher positions. Our Welcome Back Week for staff, but we looked at this piece, we looked at, Kim spoke about the fact that there was problem solving that needed to occur and that some staff learned of their new assignment during this Welcome Back Week because of the complications of the Skyward system and systems not working the way that you would think that they could in looking at, thinking critically. So, this Welcome Back Week for staff, throughout that week, Superintendent Johnson, as well as the executive team members, found the majority of staff that were affected by the repurposing. We were out in the buildings talking with staff, and we found that the majority of staff that were affected, these staff members were gracious, professional, positive, and highly engaged in the new work that they were about to encounter for the year. Of the 44 staff members that were repurposed, the district was able to retain 43 of those to continue to work to meet the needs of the students in our district throughout this next year. The slide here is the same slide that I shared with everybody on August 17th at that board meeting. And at that point in time, I had shared this slide, which showed the progress for many components related to both staffing and hiring. At that point in time, we were at the beginning stages of determining the FTE and the instructional models for both of the high schools. There are some specific reasons for the differences in the length of time that's needed to staff at the varying levels. And so, I wanted to be able to go back to that original slide that I shared on the 17th, where you could see that we were much farther along for the elementary and middles than what we were for the high schools, and then be able to provide you some specific information starting on the next slide about what those differences entailed. So, when we look at the high school virtual staffing, which obviously has been, as Kim indicated earlier, a bump in the road, and we've heard about it from both Superintendent Johnson, community input, and our student reps, there's some very unique challenges that go into this piece. So, when we look at this, if we look at the fact that each student in the high school has a specific individualized schedule, there's nearly 200 course offerings for each of those students to select from, and with just about 3,200 students between both North and Memorial, that's a staffing puzzle of approximately 640,000 pieces. And that doesn't even include the piece of staffing regarding licensures. Because oftentimes, there's staff members who either want to be able to support students in teaching something that those students want or something that the district needs, but the staff members simply aren't licensed in that particular area. So that adds to the complexity of those unique staffing challenges. And that was the case this year, where we had sections that needed to be staffed and didn't necessarily have the people that were licensed in the right areas that were available to teach the correct sections. So, each year, the district, whether it's in a pandemic year or not, we work diligently to try to meet the needs of all student course requests. And in many cases, we're able to do so through a variety of methods when all students are face-to-face in the building. However, when the students are 100% virtual and have course selections, and we evaluated those course selections, there may have been courses that were offered and students selected that wouldn't have normally been offered due to the small number of students that now would have been in those courses because those students had now moved to Cohort C, 100% virtual model. But with some additional collaboration between both North and Memorial, we were able to create full sections where we were able to meet the requests more so than what we had originally thought. So, had we not taken the time that we did, there would have been several 100% virtual students who wouldn't have received the courses that they had requested and anticipated that they were going to get if in the very beginning, we would have just said, "Nope, we can't offer that, and that's going to be canceled. The students are going to have to select something else that either they weren't interested in, they weren't studying, it wasn't part of their career path." But because we took that additional time to try to work all of this out, students were able to secure nearly everything that they had originally wanted. But to do that, it obviously required some additional staffing. And a lot of that goes back to that licensure piece I had spoke about earlier. And we can see that breakdown of additional staffing on the next slide. So here, you can see that additional staffing is broken down into two areas, which would be long-term substitutes and limited-term employees. So, between the two high schools, to meet those additional needs, we acquired an additional 6.0 staff members. 2.0 of those were in the long-term sub-area, and 4.0 of those came in the limited-term employee area. But with those additional 6.0, we are now... we are now, we now believe that we are able to meet the needs of the Cohort C students as well as our blended model students. And so this, along with the virtual administrators at each the elementary and secondary level, we believe we are going to start seeing some changes in the frustrations that people have been experiencing. And we believe that this is going to start to move things in the right direction. So with that, I think that Jim, nope, so sorry, Kim's going to talk about some highlights about our first day of school.
I am, I am. Thank you. So after almost five and a half months, or 24 weeks, or 172 days, on September 1st, we welcomed students back to the first day of school for the 2021 school year. This was the day that many of us had been waiting for. It certainly was a new normal, both for staff and for students. But very early on, on that first day, we realized just how resilient the students were. The new normal for students included many changes from when they left us in March of 2020. In previous updates to the board, we had shared with you many new routines in our school, including the ones that you see listed here. Using our PBIS framework, students were taught expectations for each of these new routines. And they will be supported in learning those routines and reinforcing those routines as the school year continues. However, as we visit schools and talk with principals and teachers, we can really see that students, even with those new routines, have settled nicely into the school year and are very ready to be back at it and engaged in learning. We'll try it this way. There we go. Hopefully. There we go. Many of the new routines that students have, for students, have been centered around the health and safety of students and staff, like we've talked about at previous board meetings. Our buildings and ground staff have made a number of changes to schools in the past few months. And as the school year began, our health and safety efforts really focused on behavioral changes for students and staff. This included teaching and reteaching healthy behaviors, emphasizing hand washing and sanitation practices, practicing physical distancing and wearing masks, and really learning more about what COVID-19 is and how it's spread in the community. And I'm so proud of our students, staff, and families in our efforts to lessen the COVID risk. They've modeled proper behavior. They took it seriously and supported each other. And since face-to-face instruction began on September 1st, two schools have been impacted by positive COVID cases. Because students and staff used the strategies that we know reduce the risk of exposure, there were no close contacts in either of those cases that were identified within the school. We were able to keep students engaged in learning despite the pandemic. So with 20 schools and sites, 9,000 in-person students, and 1,400 staff, this is quite a tremendous feat. So Jim would like to talk with you about what that learning looks like in the midst of the pandemic.
Thanks, Kim. We continue to work with staff supporting in-person instruction with social distancing requirements. And while the initial perception might be that things are much more restricted in this environment, in the photo on the left, you can see one of our repurposed teachers, Leah Olson, implementing a strategy called SMART. It's an acronym for Stimulating Maturity Through Accelerated Readiness Training. It's a curriculum that engages students physically to increase cognitive readiness, engagement, and learning. We trained over 100 teachers this summer, in addition to other teachers last summer. And these strategies can and should be used in our current environment to ensure that students are fully engaged in learning. In the other photos, you can see our staff engaging our students in learning and recess outside. The message of movement has been heard by our staff, and they are actively engaging our students as often as possible. Abby is now going to also discuss the food service routines that have become part of our new normal in the reopening of schools.
So when we talk about food service routines, breakfast is the same at all three levels. It's a grab-and-go style breakfast, and breakfast is eaten in the classrooms at each level. When we go to lunch, students can pick from a choice of packed portions, and they take them off of the line and put them in their boats that they're carrying out to their place where they're eating. Elementary-level students are eating in the classrooms, and middle school and high school students are eating either in the lunch room or in the gymnasiums. Now I'm going to go back to Jim, who will talk about the virtual updates.
Thanks, Abby. So you saw tonight the reassigning of administrators to oversee the virtual programming. We know that 90% of our families indicated an interest in our GENE survey for some sort of in-person learning. We currently have 82% of our families engaged in some form of in-person learning. So the survey was a good indicator for us, not perfect, but close. All families this year, though, will have some or 100% of a virtual experience. And we're committed to offering a quality virtual experience for all of our students. This clearly involves technology needs and also requires work with virtual instruction through an equity lens. So we're happy to report on the technology end that every student was issued a device to start the school year. We have received most of our new devices that were approved over the summer at the July 6 meeting. And many students will be receiving upgraded equipment soon. Additionally, any student initially requesting a hotspot for internet access received one. We had a second round of requests, and we'll be meet those needs as soon as our supplier can deliver them. Staff receive their devices in August, with some accessories still arriving later this month. We also have many more online resources than in past years. Canvas, Seesaw, Capstone, Newsela, StudySync, College Preparatory Mathematics, Math Expressions, Think Central, and many more have been added to our repertoire of resources from past years. These resources all pivot off of Skyward. So the course, creating, creation of courses and the rostering within it drives the access to all of those resources. And due to the many schedule changes we experienced when Kim was talking about those three to four weeks, really delayed Skyward and Skyward being updated. So many of those resources were not fully accessible to our students at the start of the year. Mostly, the issues have been resolved quickly, but with some still evolving based on changes that are occurring to students' schedules. So anytime that we have a student, when their schedule changes, we typically see that reconcile itself overnight when all those systems synchronize with one another. So virtual teaching, and you heard quite a bit about this at the beginning. And again, as I mentioned a little bit earlier, and Superintendent Johnson talked about during the Human Resources Report, we recognize this is a need that requires repurposing of administrative staff as well to support repurposed teaching staff. We continue to meet with teachers to support 100% virtual students. The model is a shift from traditional in-person teaching. It involves more asynchronous activities with small group check-ins. It's not apples-to-apples comparison in terms of the number of students, face-to-face time, or types of activities that you would see in person. We've heard comments and questions about whether teachers should have 20 students versus 40 in a virtual class. As we've reached out to experts in this area, both virtual schools and vendors, they keep reiterating that virtual instruction is highly individualized. And if we try to replicate in-person instruction in the online environment, it's both very difficult to maintain higher class sizes and engagement, regardless of class size. However, shifting to a virtual format involves creating short video tutorials, individualized tasks, assessments where students create products instead of selecting answers, and where students meet in small groups with their instructor instead of in whole group settings. We began offering trainings right away in the first week of August, intensified the frequency of those trainings when teachers return, and continue to offer them every Wednesday during the allotted professional development time. Our professional development site on SharePoint has been a source of training options for our staff. And we are providing integrated opportunities for them, creating pop-up professional development, and continuing to develop learning strands based on real-time requests we receive from our staff. We are also working, through all of this and through a lot of those logistical details, through the Comprehensive Coordinated Early Intervention Services Plan, as we begin to roll out our equitable multi-level system of support administrative and coordinator positions alongside the other teaching and learning department positions. Our goal is to be engaging in tasks to support the systems that exist and the equity work needed to address the district's disproportionality designation. We kicked off the school year's Power Perception Mentor Program for middle school and high school Black students on September 8th, and are working to identify and strengthen that program and bring it to elementary students and families later this year. We're collaborating with the Wisconsin RTI Center to provide district leaders, both administrators and teacher leaders, with training regarding culturally responsive systems. We've also drafted Facilitating Courageous Conversations: A Guide for Educators in response to staff asking for resources and support in handling challenging conversations about race issues in our nation. And so Abby is going to walk us through the breakfast and lunch program next.
Thanks, Jim. So as Commissioner Johnson talked about early on in the board meeting, he shared that we are providing free breakfast and lunch to all of our students and members of our community that are under age 18. So we learned right before school started that USDA extended the summer food service program until funds are exhausted or December 31st of 2020, whichever comes first. Now, I did want to highlight that the picture that we have on the screen is not a picture from this year because our lunch lines and our cafeterias are set up much differently. But we wanted to show you that the kids are still able to help themselves and get their food. It just looks different. And so wanted to bring that back to your attention. Currently, we are offering pickup service for those free meals every day, 8:30 to 9:30 at our secondary schools. And so each school has a designated pickup location, which has been shared with our families, and we wanted to highlight that as well. And then we have some really good news, and you will see more about it tomorrow. But our student Meals on Yellow Wheels is going to be coming back. If you've been paying attention, over the summer, we had student meals on yellow wheels throughout the summer in our community. And that was a place where we could actually bring food, and you could walk up to the bus and get your meals. And so that's going to start back up this week on Wednesday with three routes that are hitting specific areas in our community. And that information will be able to be located on our Facebook page and social media, as well as the schools will be sharing that in the next day, as well as emails to families. And we're very excited about this. And we hope to get a good turnout to help our community with this great service that will help all of our students and families in the Eau Claire area. And I'm going to turn it back over to Superintendent Johnson for final reflections on the start of the school year.
Thank you, Abby. Before I get into the text on this last slide, I'd like to highlight the picture I took from the first day of school on September 1st at North Star. That's to the right there, sixth-grade teacher Tim Kamlek, who brought his students outside with their iPads, got them socially distanced. They had some fun taking science pictures and downloading those on their iPads for future classroom use. Many of us felt like first-year educators at the start. I've heard that from all staff across many schools. The key for me was to notice that when we've struggled is that we get to our resolutions far more quickly when we collaborate with others in our system. Next, we've learned that we've got to be nimble and flexible. We've got to plan carefully with numerous stakeholders. I need to communicate timely from a district perspective, ensure the resources are present to make such changes. I believe the majority of our families do understand and respect and appreciate the communication, even if the decisions do change or they disagree with us as long as it's timely and it provides that rationale. And as Emeryan has always stated earlier, we must do better for our students, and we will. Must have the ability to support immediately. The just-in-time supports, like Jim explained about our pop-up PD, had proven this was extremely positive for our high school staff. Thank you to our teaching and learning and technology departments. You guys were wonderful. Future requests to virtual Cohort C must and will be handled differently than we did from the 5th to the 28th time period in August to allow the staffing to be recognized, candidates interviewed by principals, hired, and then placed into a schedule. If we don't utilize this order, it places too much stress on our staff, as I mentioned earlier. The ownership concept of our virtual model was critical for us. We committed to a shift in the administrator at each virtual level, as I stated previously tonight. That complex system knowledge and how adjustments at one impact another, the systemic balance, staffing, scheduling, enrollment, HR, it's a delicate balance that makes it difficult for such a larger organization with so many students. But finally, and most critically, the safe learning environment. In our strategic plan, under social emotional growth for students, that first action step is to maintain a safe and supportive learning environment. Our students' health and safety is most critical. Thank you, and will now be available for questions and discussion.
Thank you. We'll now open it up for comments and questions from board members, from our virtual colleagues. I'll try to be flipping back and forth to catch you when you unmute. I'm going to wait for you to make a motion other than looking at me so I know what you want.
Yeah, I could ask a question here. So you said, I just want to confirm, you said 82, approximately 82% of our students are in the blended model. So that leaves 18% utilizing 100% virtual, Jim. Is that correct?
Correct. When Kim said about 9,000 in the blended, correct. That's about 82% of our students.
Okay. And what percentage of our, so talk to me about the percentage of staff then assigned. Like what is, how does that shake out to in-person versus virtual? Like if we had to look at staffing as a percentage point, how much resource is going to the in-person model versus the virtual model?
I'll have to defer to Kay on that one.
And Erica, I don't have those exact figures. I can certainly get those for the board and share them with Superintendent Johnson so we can share those in a written report.
Sure, thanks. Yeah, I just, I just want to see. And I understand that the virtual structure is probably significantly different than what in-person education demands. I think one of the things that I've been hearing a lot from virtual-only families is the issues with these class sizes and really feeling that their kids are not getting the one-on-one attention within that virtual model that they would be getting in the hybrid model within the classroom. And, you know, I just wanted, maybe you could speak to that quickly if that's going to get addressed with these staffing ads.
I think it's probably two-pronged. Not only is it the staffing ads, I think that'll definitely be a component of addressing what the concerns that you've had or the concerns that you've heard. But I think it's also part of coming from Jim's area in the TNL department and the professional development that comes along with understanding not only the difference in how to instruct in a virtual setting, but the technology and the resource tools that teachers have available to them. And that doesn't happen overnight, which is why the TNL department's been working so diligently to be able to provide those professional development opportunities. And I don't know if, Jim, maybe you wanted to speak a little bit to that because I know that it's not just, here, we're throwing more staffing at you, but it needs to be, you know, it can't just be more people. It needs to be people who understand what needs to happen. And we need to be able to provide them with the information to make that happen. And so I know that your team's working really hard to provide them with those resources.
Thanks, Kay. So we did, we started back on August 3rd. We started running sessions and really talked about the shift. We had a couple of different vendors provide training specifically in this area. But a lot of our staff, that timeline again that Kim shared, some of our staff didn't even know they were going to be teaching virtual, or they weren't even hired for us to be teaching virtual yet. So and then to try to make sure they get all their classes and all the tools that they need in place. Some of them are just now catching their breath. And now we're going to continue to bring those resources to our staff. And that's what I just talked about, just in time for some folks they were ready for in early August. Some folks, as soon as we came back, and some, we're still going to keep providing and providing some of the same things in some, at a different level of intensity than we did earlier, depending on the needs of our staff. And we continue to survey our staff every time we run sessions, or also leading up to them to make sure that we tailor our training to meet the needs that they are identifying.
Great, thanks.
Dr. Johnson?
Yeah, I have a question. As it pertains to your, is staff a concern? Kay, in that model that you, that you brought up, you had the percentage of long-term substitutes versus long-term employees. I guess my concern or my question, could you also address the, if that was used to adequately address particularly some of the existing shortcomings? Assuming, if you will, that we run into issues as it relates to staff and teachers being sick, where are we in terms of our shortcomings? sick, where are we in terms of our short-term substitution model, and where does that traditionally fit in into the LTE side, the long-term substitute? Where are we? Do we, could you just give us an update where we are in terms of our short-term substitution pool? And what's our level of not being able to adequately supply instruction? I'm just really curious as to, as to that, and given the media coverage just recently bringing that about, about our shortage in short-term substitutes. Could you, where does that play in the overall equation in terms of hiring, where we are in terms of our short-term substitution?
I think I heard a couple of different questions there. The first being the 6.0 FTE that were shared, that were shared in the PowerPoint slide. Are those FTE being used to address some of the staff issues within buildings? And the answer to that is yes. Some of those FTE went to be able to make sure that prep periods were able to be provided to staff members and to reduce staffing overloads within buildings. So some of that FTE was allocated to address those concerns and issues within the building. Then the second question that I heard was related to, you know, day-to-day sub-coverage. And although I don't have specific data for you, I can tell you that knowing that there was a question earlier today about, you know, sub-coverage and reporters wanting to do a story, I did check in with our office about where we were at with sub-coverage in comparison to other years. And actually, our fill rate is better this year than what it was at this point in time last year. We have seen some unfilled absences, but not an unusual amount, especially in comparison to where we were at last year. I don't know if some board members who were with us last year would recall, but last year was a really rough time for substitutes, and so astronomically more so than any of the previous years. And so our fill rate is actually in a better place this year than what it had been previously. And so that's for both certified staff as well as support staff. And so we continue to work with Edge of Staff, our sub provider, and try to elicit more staff for them to have in their sub pool, and they partner very well with us to try to secure subs. The other thing that we're doing is, and I may have mentioned this at the last board meeting, I'm not sure, trying to partner with UWEC and CVTC regarding the fact that, you know, many of their students whose schedules may not have permitted them to partner with us in the past, but now because of many of their work being done virtually, they would now be available to partner with us to support our students during the day. And we continue to work with that as well.
Can I, can I just ask just a follow-up? In your line of work, what's a positive or what's a favorable fill rate percentage? So, because I'm assuming fill rate, basically that's substitution needs versus that, what those ended up being fills. So do you guys work at a percentage where you feel comfortable with going through day-to-day operations? What's the fill rate that you feel comfortable with being able to go through day-to-day operations?
Oh, you know, I know that there are some industry standards. I couldn't quote them off the top of my head. Ideally, we would never want any position to go unfilled, but the way that the workforce has been in the past handful of years, that obviously hasn't been the case. So each year, we try to, you know, fill as many positions as we can, and we've had to be more creative than in years past in being able to do that. Again, I can, when I get the information from Commissioner Zur's question, I can add that same information in terms of the industry standard for acceptable fill rates and share that same information in that report with Mr. Johnson, or sorry, Superintendent Johnson.
So, Commissioner Lyons, I have you. I will, just before I give you the floor, I would also like to remind our new student representatives that we welcome your questions. Zoe, I know I can see your icon on my screen, so if you have a question that you'd like to add in any of our presentations tonight or going forward, I can see that. Emery, I know tonight you are using a different technology set, so you may have the pass if you have a question, just a request for the floor through the chat function. But we do welcome your questions, so do not be shy of asking whatever you need to ask. We welcome your feedback and your thoughts and questions. Commissioner Lyons, over to you.
Yes, thank you. I was interested if compliance with mask-wearing and with social distancing has gone smoothly. And I would also be interested in any update on the rollout of the device-per-student program.
So I will answer the question about compliance with mask-wearing and social distancing, and then I will pass it on to Jim for the tech rollout. I think that was one of the, one of the topics that we talked quite a bit about before students came. What will be our response if students refuse, or what will be our response if things aren't going well? And we have not, the things that we anticipated, the conversations we anticipated needing to have or practiced, having, have not come to fruition. Even our youngest students are wearing masks. Certainly, we're building stamina, and so younger students need to, you know, work on building a little bit of stamina, while the older students are certainly, they have more stamina for wearing their masks. But our motto is schools on, masks on, and like I referred to in the presentation, our students are very resilient, and they have adjusted quite well to that. In fact, just earlier this week, or late last week, some students at one of our schools were playing basketball at recess, and they said to the supervisor on the playground, we're going to be closer than six feet when we play basketball. We should probably keep our masks on. So our elementary students certainly are understanding it. Physical distancing has been something certainly that we needed to teach at all of our schools. And so if you were to visit schools, you would see, for example, at some of our schools that are birds, like the Meadowview Hawks or the Robins Eagles, we talk about hawks wings apart, and so kids will spread their arm, and they know they need two wings between one another. At Longfellow, they have a lion is about six feet long. At the secondary schools, there are stickers on the floor to denote six feet apart. And students really have done a fine job with that. They're understanding physical distancing as well. I think this also speaks to their ability to follow the guidelines for physical distancing and mask-wearing, really speaks, we can kind of see the evidence in that with our positive cases that have had zero contacts on school grounds. So I think the, I think the public speaker said the lagging indicator would be that our physical distancing and our wearing masks is working. Jim, did you want to answer the technology question?
Yeah. So this summer, July 1st, we made a shift within the teaching and learning department that went unnoticed in many, but I think would prove to be as timely as ever. We moved our library media program to match what the Department of Public Instruction does, and we moved it under our technology department. It had sat in academic services for many years, and the reason for that move is our library media folks are in charge of cataloging and supporting technology at the elementary, but at all levels, they're in charge really of our inventory of our fleet. And so that partnership really paid big dividends when we went to delivering devices to students. I was able, when we visited schools on the first day, I saw teams that were coordinated between technology and library media, working very quickly to get students the devices that they needed. They're going to be swinging back around again at some levels because now we have new devices in. They were very committed with the principles to making sure that everyone at least had a device to start, even though some were very old devices. But they've also ensured that as soon as the new devices are in there now, I'm turning those around as well. So it was a big lift. It wasn't easy. They were pretty stressed out about it. I make no mistake about it. It wasn't like this was simple work. They really, really worked hard, brought in lots of hands, and reassigned some time within the buildings to make it happen. But we got devices into kids' hands right away so that they could be engaged in the virtual portion of blended learning for those students. The 100% virtual students, so they received their devices right away on August 31st. So they were able to get that out the door right away. So they did a wonderful job, and as you can imagine, and the student mentioned James Martin, he's probably the most popular guy in town lately because he's really coordinated a bunch of the research deployment, and has just done a fabulous job.
So one of the things I want to applaud you all on is how, when things come up and we hear about things from students and from staff, it always amazes me how quickly you guys are on top of it and are out in front of those concerns, and it is quite reassuring to me as a board member, and I just want to applaud you for how, I know how much, the tremendous amount of work that you must have been doing. I can't even fathom how much you have been doing. And I really want to encourage, the one thing that is not difficult in all of this difficult, all the difficulty that we're in right now, the one thing that is not difficult is communication. We're all on the same team. We all want to be here. And I think a lot of the issues that I've heard about in the last couple of weeks, certainly in the last week with the intensity of the start of virtual and the staffing issues, I think the more we can be out in front of communicating with those constituent groups, I think a lot of the trouble with virtual could maybe have been, I think Jim and I were both on the Mung PTA meeting this past week, and a lot of those parents, they weren't, they weren't upset, they weren't, they didn't want anything, they just really wanted to know. And it was really just a communication breakdown. And so not to give you guys anything else to do, or to encourage you to do any more work, but I think if we can keep that, if we can be out in front of that communication as much as we can to our families, to our students, and to our staff, I think it will really help as we piece together these challenges. So, that's all.
Yeah, so I have a question as it relates to, I guess it goes along with communication, but it was brought up earlier, and yeah, like you mentioned, but could you just speak a little bit more to what's the communication and understanding, not only amongst teachers delivering those blended learning and those teachers delivering virtual, but also the communication to parents and the understanding that, I think it would be, it would be a disservice for individuals to believe that the amount of time would be the same navigating a virtual environment asynchronously versus blended learning face-to-face and its association to, some teachers also having synchronous components to, for those students participating in the blending, the blended learning model versus this virtual model that, I think the most virtual programs, unless more expensive ones are synchronous, but you have this asynchronous piece. So could you just speak to what's that level of understanding to teachers and their delivery of their virtual pieces and that alignment with asynchronous? And then the communication piece with families and students realizing that there is a difference between asynchronous and synchronous learning experiences using both of these models? How is that being communicated? How is that understood? Because I guess some of the feedback that I was receiving, it's really, it's unclear to some of our particular staff, and then I'm pretty sure the executive team gets similar emails as the board. It's definitely unclear to parents and students.
So I think both of you and Commissioner Zer's comments or questions are, commenting question are quite in line with one another, and that's why you saw the human resources report today. We recognize the same thing. And so just like a building has a building principal that helps their families work through changes and all those ebbs and flows that happen in programming, we didn't have a point person at either level to really speak specifically to the virtual program. As a matter of fact, I was talking tonight to a parent, and we were having this conversation about the experience that they were having as a family, and they actually are connected with some other virtual, families that are attending virtual schools like outside of the district. And really, the things I was talking about earlier is the things that she's seeing from their experience. You know, much more asynchronous, small group, not bringing kids together in large groups. So making those shifts is something that a principal will do with their staff in terms of trying to meet their needs. And it was, as we went through and looked at the responsibilities, we had this vibrant discussion about the roles of this position, and there's, the role is really twofold. You have some really logistical things, making sure kids are getting the right programming, make sure they're scheduled in the right way with the right teacher, but then there's also that leadership piece where administrator is the point person to work with that staff so that they can help support them and help them grow in that evolution of their practice. Right now, we've had lots of people trying to lead that group, and this change allows us to streamline the communication with families, the communication with the teachers and the expectations, and really be an advocate for all the, both the teachers and the students and their families in a way that we haven't done before. We talked about the, when Kim talked about that, three to four months became three to four weeks. This is part of our learning curve as well, and we identified, actually a few weeks ago, like the need for this, but it took a while to realign our resources to be able to provide that opportunity. So we're very excited for those roles to begin on Wednesday. We've already started to queue up and have conversations with those two so that we can do exactly what you're asking for. And in the meantime, we have pockets of it. We have different people, like our Becky Graff has been working still with our virtual teachers at the middle school and elementary level, and we're hoping to bring on the high school group soon because it took a while for them to get assigned their position, which again was related to that comment earlier, that difficult to grow them in their practice when they don't, haven't even been assigned to those positions. So we recognize that same need that you're talking about, and that was mentioned earlier from our students during their opportunity, and really hoping that we can turn a corner on this in a very positive way to benefit everyone.
I think one thing I'd like to add to what Jim had mentioned, Commissioner Zer and Commissioner Johnson, about the communication. Our executive team, the first time we had met, and I've learned this from executive team members, directors, and principals, is last week, we had the first time where we had our executive team and our directors together, and I want to call that our cabinet. And what I expected every executive director and director to talk about, case in point for both of your points, would be not only, you know, what are the things that are going well in your departments, but also what are the things you're struggling with, and what types of communication do you feel you need to share with the system? And how can we help with that? And we had not had that last part before. So when people, let's say Becky Graff in teaching and learning feels, well, I really need some help in this message, how do we get that out to people? That's an example of us sharing that with not just principals, so that principals can inform their teachers, but also with families. And a perfect example of this was we had 198 people that are still waiting for that instructional model to change. Last night, as I had mentioned before, Michelle Ratkey had sent out messages to those 198 families who were waiting to say, you know, here are some expectations, we will get to them when this occurs. As of right now, this is what you're expected to do, so that board members and principals are not inundated with questions. That we have heard you, we're getting to that, but we have to have some things in place, as I illustrated earlier. We need to make sure that that happens. And like I said, most families, they understand, as long as you communicate with us and give us maybe a little bit more of an idea, but no communication, that's not good for anybody. So we totally agree with you.
We do have two other agenda items. I'll ask Dr. Bika and Commissioners Harder or Clemens to hear from you if you have any particular questions, otherwise we will turn to the next item. Okay, there may of course be other questions. I know I've seen my colleagues writing notes, so. Okay, there may of course be other questions. I know I've seen my colleagues writing notes, so please feel free to send those on to Superintendent Johnson and the rest of the cabinet for answers if you have them. Let's, we're running now a little bit more behind than I would have liked to, so we may go a little bit past nine tonight, but I do want to get to the next two items. We'll move on now to the referendum update. Commissioner Harder, I don't know if this is you or Abby if you're starting off that discussion.
Abby.
I'm just starting to share my screen. So let's try again. There we go. Okay. So as Commissioner Harder talked earlier in the budget development update, the budget development team has met twice since the last board meeting. In the board meeting or the meeting we wanted to share about and talk about today was really the meeting from last week on September 9th. And that was really our conversation around developing and discussing the next steps with the referendum for spring of 2021 and if the district could deliver a successful referendum. So we reviewed the current timelines to see where the district stands in its current referendum work. So this calendar should look very familiar to the board because this was the calendar that was adapted when the initial plan was set for the referendum in April of 2020. So just a few updates that I wanted to share with you and the work has been completed. So August 2016 to August 2019 was determining the need, talking about elementary boundary changes, self needs assessment and estimated costs. So self needs are still being worked on, but the elementary recommendations came forward to the board on April 6th and July 20th. In December of 2019, the goal was to provide some building updates identified for Roosevelt South, Metaview Mans, Putnam Heights, Robbins, or potentially new construction. Again, south is still being worked on, but the Roosevelt deferred maintenance was determined. And then elementary recommendations were given to the board on April 6th and July 20th. The budget planning, as you all know, we're still working through that right now. We've had some extra work due to COVID and a lot of moving parts and changes. So we have had a few budget updates, but over the course of the next month, we will have many, many more with the actual budget adoption happening at the end of October. Our timeline showed between February and March of 2020, we should be doing a lot of work for our capital referendum and giving that information to the board. And that work is still in progress. In February to April, we were going to work on and have some listening sessions and work sessions and then get some feedback from our family advisory council. That the board has provided an update on May 18th with what we were able to do, and that was in terms of a survey to our community. In April 2020, the original plan was to have community forums, use that information to help develop a plan and then sharing back from budget development to the full board about where potential questions might land and what they would recommend. Budget development did talk about referendum calendars and questions in January and March. Going on, you can see that the yellow highlights were some big milestones that the school board must meet. And so with that, in May, the goal was that budget development was going to bring the school board three possible questions and then discussing the recommendations from the board. All of that work was put on hold due to the current COVID pandemic. Then when we look at kind of the next steps from June of 2020 through October 9th was just really determining what are the next steps, talking about a survey for the community needs, meeting with parent groups, staff members, community groups, and also meeting with each building that was potentially impacted by the referendum. We know that things are very different. And so one of the questions we said is what are the next steps? You can see another yellow highlight in June and July of 2020, and that was the board discussion on next steps and reviewing the timeline and actually modifying any timelines back at the beginning of July. October 2020, obviously we will adapt the budget and we will look at the budget that's presented to the school board as well. Then in November to January 2021, the recommendation is that we've been summarizing the feedback from the listening sessions, identifying any areas that need emphasis or additional information and kind of again finalizing the scope of the project and confirming that unity within our school district. Then there's some time to prepare the materials for the referendum and things that help, you know, just inform our community and our public about that. In January of 2021, the board would need to adopt the official question and certify that to the municipalities to get onto the ballot. And then of course, in April, the highlights in yellow would be the actual referendum dates. Budget development discussed a lot of challenges that we currently see right now. It's difficult for the district to make plans in an unusual school year. We don't know how many students are going to be returning to the brick and mortar setting because the school year is very different. And you've heard it earlier tonight that there's almost 20% of our students learning in a virtual environment. Do we know and do we feel confident right now that those students are going to come back to a brick and mortar setting once the pandemic has ended? Another concern that talked about with budget development was the 2122 state budget and K-12 impact. We have reason to believe in the 2021 school year that there will not be any changes to our revenue that was certified to us on July 1st. Obviously that final certification comes on October 15th. But we know we're in year two of a biennial budget. We heard in the last couple of weeks that tax revenues were higher than what we were projected. And so we're not anticipating any budget shortfalls from the state or any significant changes from the state. But what we are hearing is that 2122 is going to be different and they may decrease our revenue between five and 10%. We would be, if we continue with the April 2021 timeline, we may not have any information on the state budget for 2122 because we've heard the legislator isn't going to even talk budgets until after the November 2020 election. What does that mean to us? We don't know what our operational needs are going to be. If we don't know what this revenue is going to be and what our revenue limit might look like, it's going to be hard for us to estimate our operational needs. So in budget development on September 9th, as Commissioner Harder shared earlier tonight, we discussed postponing the referendum and shifting all the timelines of the calendar I just reviewed with you for one year and go to the voters in April of 2022. Another piece that was discussed with budget development was starting to get some preliminary work, working with that support Oakley Public Schools Group that Ms. Komet, who talked during public comment with the president of back in 2016. The committee feels like this would be a good option just due to the unusual school year and things that are different. And we're not sure of how everything's going to fall in place this year. So with that, we'd like to open it up for discussion, questions and next steps from all board members.
Thank you, Abby, and thank you, members of budget development for talking through some of these things. It's certainly been something that's been on my mind over the past few months, thinking about how quickly April would be here and how much work we have not been able to undergo just because of having to put so much effort into COVID and just getting there. So I appreciate all the thoughtfulness of what must have been your discussion. I'll ask the three of you that are members if there's anything else that came out in that that you'd like to highlight here and then of course just open it for general questions.
Oh, well, I can speak. I think Abby's covered it very well. It's just really the, I think, one of the biggest factors in this recommendation of delaying a year was just the number of very significant unknowns that are very material to questions that we would want answers to in order to put together a referendum plan. And then quite a number of those very important factors are really much more unknown than normal because of COVID right now. So I think that, for me, that sums up why the recommendation is as where it is, but glad to discuss further with other board members.
Go ahead, Dr. Johnson.
Yeah, I would just like to add, if I go back to that, the slide number. Just as you guys are talking about some of the reasons not to have the referendum on April 21st. I would also add and I would encourage as we move forward to this April, new proposed April 22, that our framing of the referendum really focuses on the positives. Because what I would add, another reason why I would be, I think it's advantageous not to do it in April was also, we have to also think about public sentiment currently locally as it relates to kind of how we are operating in these unusual times as a district or as a district itself. And I'm not sure, given everything that's going on in individual lives personally, would be ideal to bring something of this magnitude forward. So as we move forward and we consider framing, whether it's working with that, with that support of Claire Public School Group, I would also encourage though just us to think about how we frame the messaging going forward about the positives this would add to our particular community, given in light of kind of, I guess, our current state where we can't get ourselves moving in any type of direction. So I would just, that was just a comment there. Thank you.
I'll just say quickly, I very much agree with that concern. And I think it did factor in that question of sentiment and just the general perception of the district and what the district is delivering right now. Very important questions, agreed.
So I think then the question comes down to what are our next steps? It sounds like budget development, of course, is recommending that we delay for a year. Dr. Johnson, it sounds like you're on board for that. And I don't hear a lot of anybody leaving out of seat for that. I think we actually took board action to approve the timeline for 21. I'm not sure if we can just then put that on like a consent agenda to move it, or if we should just hold a small item, individually considered item next time, but we can consider that in agenda setting unless anybody has an objection. If anybody has an objection now to at least being considered for consent agenda, now would be the time to speak up, but otherwise we'll talk about it tomorrow and then setting and put it wherever the item is appropriate. Okay, great. Then we will consider that, whether it's a consent item or a short individual item for the next meeting. We're picking up time now, so that's making me very happy. Let's move on to our last item. You can laugh while you want, Dr. Johnson, but after President Torres's tenure, very strong nine o'clock meetings, I'm sensitive to it. And we're going to work on it as hard as we can. Let's go on to the budget update. Abby, I'm sure that's you again.
You are correct. It is me again. And so it's going to be a short budget update. As I alluded to before, we're still learning a lot of things right now and finalizing the end of the 1920 year and, you know, moving into the 2021 year. So just a quick update on our audit from 2019 and 2020. The audit's going well and we will have some more information to share with the board in an upcoming board meeting. So just some things that we wanted to remind you of and that we know is really related to revenue. And so we're in year two of the biennial budget. And so just a quick comparison of our state aid between 1920 and 21, we're expecting almost $5 million more in that state aid category. And if you remember, that's due to some per people increases and some revenue limit increases that are coming directly in year two of the biennial budget. And if you'll remember, anytime our state aid goes up, normally our property tax levy will go down. And so a preliminary calculation shows that our tax levy is going to go down about $3 million. And so an overall net effect of about 1.9 million to our revenue budget. Again, those are based upon our July 1st state aid estimates. And our property tax levy estimate is also provided on that July 1st estimate. And for those of you that haven't been through a budget cycle yet in the Oakley School District, we get these numbers finalized to us on October 15th. So you might curious talk about third Friday and how important our third Friday count is. That is very important because that's a big piece of finalizing that piece of information that gets certified to us on October 15th. And so we are looking forward to that. Third Friday is actually this Friday. And then there's a lot of people around the table in the district that are working hard to get that information certified. So that way then we get our numbers at the end of, I'm sorry, on October 15th. When we talk about expenses, well, I'd like to remind you a few things that the board has already committed to. We are working to solidify our budgets and evaluating our needs. This is changing right now quite a bit due to the COVID pandemic. We've had to order things that we wouldn't normally order to help provide those safety and security measures that we've needed. Staffing has been a moving target as you heard us talk about earlier. And so finalizing that staffing piece and getting that reflected in our budget as well. And then we've had some questions about increments, which is also a big piece of our budget when we talk about that salary infringement piece. And so we're still in the process of working through that and looking at it and compiling it so we can see exactly where things are going to land for us. Some things, just a reminder that the commitments the board has already made. You've seen this slide before, but we've talked about salary increases that were granted for the year and the CPI increase that was granted and the health insurance increase. So we know that our expenditures should be up about $4.2 million based on those three categories alone. We do expect them to be up more related to some of the things that we've needed to purchase and make decisions on. So we were successful at reopening our schools. What happens in September and October between now and when we finalize the budget and the board officially adopts it at the end of October is really we'll finalize that staffing piece, the third Friday student count that I just mentioned a few moments ago. Our stated, our computer aid and our tax levy is all provided to us from DPI on October 15th. Our transportation expense is also tied to our revenue limit increase or decrease. And so we will update our transportation cost for our day to day transportation will be reflected in that final budget that's adopted. Open enrollment is also finalized with that October 15th date. And then we always complete a budget reconciliation for what we think the preliminary budget is and what that final adopted budget is. So that way then the board knows exactly what's changed from the initial look until that final approval. What kind of questions do you have that I can help answer for you tonight?
Well, I'm going to say our silence, Abby suggested we can appreciate how much is up in the air right now and all the work that you're doing. It's nice to hear that we may not be expecting a lot of shortfall at least for this next year. But I realize that you also probably have multiple budget scenarios going right now.
We do.
All right. Well, then thank you for that update. And I don't know if I dare to say we look forward to hearing how the budget is shaking out, but I'm sure we're going to hear more about it within the next month.
I'm sure you know it's this time of year, right?
Yes, very true. So requests for future agenda items? And we had previously talked in an agenda setting about dedicating some work session time and we'll be discussing that in agenda setting tomorrow.
I would just like to request a continuous update as it relates to, I think that update that the executive team provided for board, I would like to continue with that data of kind of where we're at in terms of needing the need. That's really especially what ends up packed 2200, 198 that are waiting potentially transitioning to virtual. So I'm just curious if I can, we could just continue as I have an update as to the blended learning virtual, how students are shifting there and kind of how we in terms of addressing just the continuous ability to be flexible as we, as we.
Sure, we'll have that in our discussion then tomorrow. Thank you. Other item, other requests for agenda items? All right, seeing none, then I would accept a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All right, 53. Well done, everyone. We'll see you in one week. Agenda setting is virtual. It's 8:00 AM tomorrow morning.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks, everybody.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the O'Clare Area School Board. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067 or online at valleymediaworks.org.